Amen, let's go ahead and begin our evening session of Bible study. We're gonna begin as we always do with an opening word prayer, then we're gonna follow that up. With a Q and A session where we can ask any question that we have, irregardless of whether it's from Bible studies, sermon, if you're reading something, whatever. If you got a question, I will do my best to try to answer it. If I can't answer it, I'll go research and bring it back and answer next week. And then if, once we're done with that, we'll move into our lesson for tonight. Dear Father God, Creator of the heavens and the earth, God, thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made, God. We are glad, we are rejoicing, and Father God, it's time for us to come together for Bible study. It's time for us to trust you, God, in how, God, you are going to deliver the message, deliver the word. God, we pray that we are like receptive soul, ready for the seed, so that it may bloom, it may blossom, it may grow and develop into a vine, a shrub, a hedge, a tree, that produces crop thirty times, sixty times, a hundred times over. Father God, thank you for the people that are here tonight. We ask that you would put a special blessing upon them, God, for their willingness and their sacrifice and time, God. God, we pray for those who may be on their way to join us for Bible study tonight. God, we pray for those who are joining us via social media. God, most importantly, we pray for those that you're sending this way, God, so that you, God, may connect with them and develop a lifelong relationship as their Creator and they as your children. Father God, we bless you and we worship you. It's in your Son's mighty majesty, marvelous, magnificent, and we do pray. Amen. Amen, so let's, let's open up the floor to questions, amen. If we have any questions, we wanna open up the floor so that we can answer those questions. Hopefully, prayerfully, you are, you have something. Carol, you got something? I was, I was getting ready to get a sight. Oh, yes, oh, yes, I was gonna make you laugh. You know, Carol, Carol has been keeping me straight here. Amen, she, you know, I'm gonna call her professor. You know, she, she is, she is just on me, you know, to keep me straight, amen. But it's all good, I appreciate it, I appreciate the love and everything that she gives. And I enjoy the dialogue that we have one another. And really, I don't know if she knows, but she is, it's iron sharpening iron, you know, amen. So, I, again, thank you. All right, so, let's jump into it. Are there any questions, any thoughts, any concerns, anything that was said in the sermon that you want clarification? Go ahead, Brother Sean.
Oh, well, I'm happy to get it. If I do, I'll, I'll let you know.
What about you, Deacon John? Okay, then this is what we do, we'll go ahead and get started then with our, with our lesson here tonight. When we were last together, I was trying to give us a review of where we've been. As you know, we had started Genesis and then we stopped for the month of August. And so, trying to get review, get us back to the place where we left off. And I believe that God is still gonna do something amazing through this study. So, last time we were together, we were reviewing the different group of authors that we believe are responsible for the creation of the Pentateuch, the first five books of the Bible, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy. And we were talking about this theory called the Docentary Hypothesis. This was a theory created in about the late, about eighteen sixty, eighteen seventy. And it's a theory that has hung around for the fact that not because everyone necessarily agrees that it is the theory, but it, it proposes a foundational framework upon which everyone does their own theory from. So, whereas persons haven't necessarily adopted as their theory, they've used the basis of this theory to then do theirs. And so, in the Docentary Hypothesis theory, the ideas are four groups, four main groups that are responsible for reducing to writing at least the first five books and some of the other books in the Old Testament. Now, I know, because we had this discussion last week, uh, last, the week before last, Sister Carol, in fact, your ears have been itching at noonday, because you and Deacon McMillan and Brother Sean, y'all been taught that Moses put pen to pad, that Moses wrote these books, and that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna be Moses. Go ahead, love.
Why did the Lord himself say, didn't Moses say to you or write to you or whatever?
Well, what, well, what you have there is, Jesus is not necessarily asking the Pharisees this to verify whether or not Moses wrote something. What Jesus is, what Jesus was doing, he was flipping the question back on, what you're asking. So, let me back up, so let me let everyone else know what you're asking about. At one point, the Pharisees, in an attempt to track Jesus, to show him to be a hypocrite, asked Jesus how he felt about divorce. If he, if he did not sanction divorce, then he was going against the law. If he then favored divorce upon the law, they were gonna accuse him of really trying to break up marriage, their idea of marriage at that time, all right? So, it was really a no-win situation for Jesus. Jesus doesn't answer the question as he anticipated. Jesus says to them, how was it written? What did Moses tell you? And so, and so, really what he's doing, he's not necessarily saying, okay, didn't Moses write it down? He's saying, when Moses was teaching you this, what did he teach you? And they answered that a man can divorce his wife if he, if he's, you know, and they put a period there. Jesus says, no, he didn't teach you that, he taught you that you can divorce a wife if the woman commits adultery. But the law still stands that if a man divorces his wife and marries another one while she's still alive, he commits adultery. And so, really what's happening, Jesus is really showing the Pharisees, you ain't gonna outwit me, and you ain't gonna back me into a corner where I can't handle it. So, when he says, what did Moses write? He doesn't necessarily mean Moses picking up a pen and pad and writing. He's saying what, he's really saying, what did Moses teach you? What was the commandment given? Tell me what the commandment was. Because technically, the commandments were chiseling on stone. You know, all of them were chiseling on stone. So, you can say, Moses did chisel some, if you remember, he destroyed the ones that God gave him. And when God called him back up on the mountain, he said, this time you bring the tablets, you bring the chisel, and I'll tell you if you chisel out what the commandments are. So, technically, you could say, he wrote those commandments, because he's chiseling. That's the form of writing that, one of the forms of writing. But he did not write the stories. These, these stories are collected stories, oral stories, that have been shared from generation to generation about Israel's history. The only reason why they will reduce the writing was because the Babylonians were almost guaranteed to destroy Jerusalem, and that's what they did. They ran separate.
You just went to the stories, you're talking about the first five books. So, wouldn't the Lord know that Moses didn't write it, because then he didn't say it? That's, okay, maybe I'm ignorant. I know I can't, I'm talking, because I know you know more than me.
No, 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 no.
Why would he say Moses did?
It's, it's, because in, in Israel's history, there are certain people that are known for certain things, okay? Moses is known as the lawgiver, okay? It doesn't matter if God gave law to anyone else, it's always gonna be Moses the lawgiver. Elijah is known as the great prophet. I don't care what Samuel did, Elijah is the great prophet, all right? And then David is the, is the model king. So, really what you see in those three characters are really the three aspects of God, how Israel saw God, okay? And so, anytime Jesus would talk about the law, he's going to couch it in language that the Pharisees would grasp. If he said, you know what, Enoch told you, then they say, Enoch didn't tell us that, Enoch, you know, God took command, you know? You know, Samuel told you, Samuel didn't do that, Samuel meant this. But if you couch it in, Moses said it, or Moses wrote it, it's unquestioned where he's getting the law. There's no, in other words, he avoids the argument that, where did you get that law from? You know, sometimes we have discussions where people don't wanna respond to us, they don't respond to us, but then they turn around and attack what we're saying. So, you know, so, so, you are asking a question based on the plain language of the scripture. And, 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 it, it, it does, it does, it does say that. And it, really what he says, Moses wrote you divorces, that's really the translation. You know, Moses wrote you divorces out of the hardness of your heart. And that's when he goes in to say, a man that divorces his wife and then marries another wife while the first one still married, has committed adultery. In other words, he was saying, the only reason why you wanna divorce your first wife, because you see this second woman over here, and you want to get what she off. In other words, you wanna get in her panties. And he was saying, God is no fool, that you ain't divorcing her for a legitimate reason, you're divorcing her for a purely hedonistic reason, a purely selfish reason. And if you're gonna divorce her for a purely selfish reason, then you oughta, you are going to suffer the consequences as if you actually cheated on her. So, that's really what Jesus is focused on. He ain't necessarily focused on the writing part, because what he's trying to do is get to the heart of the matter, pardon intended. He's trying to get to their hearts. Because if you notice, if I'm not saying this because of Matthew's Gospel, in Matthew's Gospel, he says this. The battle was always, in Matthew, what has things been versus what is the way God is doing it now? God was always found in his temple. If you wanted to find God, you came to the temple. The temple, you got it?
I got it.
All right, all right. Amen, amen, amen. Boy, the bug killers in the house. Yeah, you can, it's trash can, amen. The, how, the, the idea of Matthew is how, how he used to do it versus the way God is doing it now. So, the Jewish Christians, who still identified with being Jewish, they believed in Christ, they thought that, that you can only find God out of his temple. If you didn't come to the temple, you would never find God, because, you know, as we talked about it on, on last Wednesday night, the ark was in the temple, and God sat on the tip of the angel's wings on top of the ark. So, if you wanted to find God, you go to where he was. And the word says he's always right there, sitting on the tip of the angel, all right? The author of Matthew is saying, oh, wait a second, the Jewish temple has been destroyed, it is no more. Why are you looking for God in a temple that he no longer resides? God is now in the form of a man. We don't have to go to a temple now, we can find the man. And when we invite the man into our hearts, we, we invited God. This is why Jesus keeps telling them, like, God doesn't really want, remember he says, it's not what comes in your mouth that dies, it comes out of your mouth because it comes from the heart. He also says, God doesn't care that you can memorize the law, God focused on what had been written on your heart. This whole idea of your worship should not be because you're going through the ritual or the motions, it should be authentic, it should have some integrity behind it, and it should come right here. Yes, he does speak about Moses doing some writing, but the purpose ain't on the writing, the purpose is on why he wrote. He wrote, he wrote those divorces because those hard-headed Negroes just wanted to get rid of one woman and another, and to get another one. And when he realized he could not change their hearts, so he gave them divorces so that they would not be judged under God's law. But Jesus is really saying, I'm still gonna judge you, because your reason for wanting the divorce is illegitimate, is not valid. And so, that, that, that's what I'm saying. And, 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 and so, when you see that, because at one point, the Pharisees challenge him, and, because, remember, they challenged him about being God in the flesh? And they said, wait a second, how can you be the God of flesh when David was talking? And then he says, how could David be talking to anyone else but me? How could he call himself Lord if he's asking the Lord for help? He's talking to me. Again, but that talks about a writing. Uh, 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 but again, the, the, the focus isn't necessarily that it was written, it was what was being wrote about, and what was, what was, the issue was on the table, it was like, who was David talking to? And so, I'm, I'm saying that to you, uh, 'cause I, yeah, go ahead. No, oh, I'm saying that to you to say, that to Jews, what we're wrestling right now didn't matter, because it was their history. What matters for us, studying in our context, is trying to understand why the author was saying what he was saying, and what was he saying, or what was he saying? And part of understanding that and knowing that is to know the motivations of the writer. In fact, we were talking earlier today at, at Bible study, noonday Bible study, about Dan Brown's books, you know, Da Vinci Code, Angels and Demons, and whatever else he, he's written about. And, and, we were talking about how Dan Brown, Tom Clancy, and James Patterson, named ghostly, have basically created a series of books about one character. And, and the books about different things that have happened in the character's life, all right? So, Tom Clancy, Jack Ryan, is a, is an intelligent agent. So, the different things he's experienced as intelligent agents. James Patterson's book, Along Came a Spider, Kill a Spider, is about the detective that Morgan Freeman in Title of Harry Pet played. Dan Brown's book is about the character Tom Hanks plays. And, and so, I, I'm saying that to say, if you knew who Dan Brown was, or if you didn't know who Dan Brown was, and you mentioned his character's name, you don't understand Dan Brown's motivations. Dan Brown, for all intents and purposes, is a Catholic believer who's trying to challenge Catholic orthodoxy, trying to get them Catholic priests and leaders to come out of a traditional mindset into a more contemporary one. And he's trying to do it through the fictional works he's writing. This is important, because if you just read his book without knowing that, it looks like you've got a, 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 a intelligent, or, or a archaeological detective, or archaeological researcher, who's been called in to settle issues that are going on with relatives that have been found within the Catholic Church. But if you don't know the motivation, you don't know why he's writing. So, you, so you may enjoy the book, and you may talk to someone, say, I read that Dan Brown's Angels versus Demons. And someone says, you know what, I don't appreciate how they, how they cast the, the Illuminati in that as a devil's, as something bad, because that's not, you know, wait a second, what are you talking about? I don't see anything Illuminati. It wasn't, and, and, and the movie brings it out, but the book, the, it's conflated, conflated in the book. Uh, but, but you need to know that. You need to know that James Patterson is writing about a black detective in a white unit, in a white city, charged with solving crimes, where many times, the assumption is someone black did the crime, when the actual killers are, are, are the suspects, the true villains in here are white males who do not fit the pattern of what crime looks like. That's the, that's the catch of his books. And he, and it's interesting, you gotta understand, because, because he, he's a gay white man writing, he feels, James Patterson's a gay white man. Yeah, and, and so, he feels, he feels as if he's part of the minorities. And for, for technically is, being a gay, a gay man. And, and, and so, so basically what he's doing, he's using his books to show how biased, how unfair, how prejudicial the world is, and how the world assumes that persons from minority groups automatically are guilty of something, when the truth is more crime, more problems happen because of members of, 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 of the majority. Tom Clancy, intelligence, former, former army intelligence, is writing this story to basically expose to you just what intelligence involves. We, 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 we say army intelligence, you know, CIA, we don't know what that involves. And so, what he's trying to do is trying to give you a fictional insight to what really goes on. And, and so, if you knew these motivations, then you can, then you can adjust the story in a certain context, and then you can say, okay, you know what, I can, I would rather use James Patterson's books in, in, in light of what's happening with cops killing black men, rather than I would a Jack Ryan book, because here's the, I'm not gonna have the insight into, into the police, they're not gonna let me have, come have the insight, they're not gonna share their secrets. However, I get more traction using a James Patterson book, because then I can analogize how the, the black detective felt in a white department that is assuming that every crime that occurs, occurs because of a black man. And so, being stuck between not being black and, and being blue enough for the badge and being too black, uh, being, yeah, not being, how does Shaft say, I'm not blue enough for the badge and not black enough for the people?
Shaft?
Mm-hmm.
That was one of his concerns with being a police officer, being a detective, that, that the brothers saw he was too blue, and the white police officer saw he was too black.
So, um, so, so I, I'm sharing that all with you to say, Sister Carol, that this is important for our context, because we are looking at, we have a different set of issues going in our present society, our present lives, than did the Israelites at this time. But, there's some things they experience that remotely, or even directly resemble what we're going through. And here it is, we don't just wanna know what was going on in the situation, we wanna know how the authors are helping us, are informing us how to deal with the situation. Remember, we, remember we said at the beginning, the Bible, the Old Testament sort of do two things. They, they give us the context of, of what was happening inside the story. The story has a context. But these stories also are written within the context of what was happening at the time. And so, the authors, as they are, are, are crafting these stories, or reducing the writing, are do, reducing them in such a way that they are not only speaking to what's happening in the story, they're, they're speaking to what's happening around, so that when people are reading these stories, they're not only seeing, understanding what's happening here, but they're seeing it modeled out here, and they're saying, okay, if that's how God wanted it to be handled here, can we replicate it out here? And honestly, that's what, 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 what we're, what we're trying to do too. We are looking at the Bible, the different stories, and see how God dealt with folks as they walked by faith, and how they walked by faith. And so, we see how they do it, and then we look and say, is this replicated somewhere out here? And if it is, how do I replicate it in such a way that enables me to be as faithful as whoever's in the story? Go ahead, love.
Two words coming out of me. I, I thought you said, the living word.
The living word, yes, yes.
The Bible keeps replicating itself down through the ages, all throughout mankind, and on every continent. It's global.
Amen.
It's not in American gospel, as we don't know.
In, in, in spite of folks wanting us to think, I wouldn't say Western, American, or Western civilization gospel. Uh, uh, in fact, it, it blows my mind, a couple things. It blows my mind that the Bible speaks like it does. I'm an avid book reader. One of my most favorite books to read is Dracula. Every couple years, I'll pick it up.
Dracula?
Yeah, yeah, Bram Stoker's Dracula. The book is about that thick. And, and every couple years, I'll pick it up and I'll read it. Sometimes I had to get a, get a new copy, because it's worn out, the pages, and whatnot, and so, I had to get a new copy. But it says the exact same thing every time I read it, okay? My initial sermon came from John eleven, the resurrection of the last one. I preached for that text probably twenty-five times, and I've never preached the same. Every time I pick up the Bible, it speaks differently than it did, I, I, I've gotten to a point, I don't even expect the Bible when I pick it up to even say the same thing. Like the, like the, uh, the inspirational message, devotional inspirational, inspiration one since morning, came from a, a written devotional that I did years ago. And as I was going through it, and I was editing it last night, I said to myself, I said, it's amazing, I just preached this scripture a couple weeks ago, and I preached it entirely different. It was one of the last scriptures that was our last series. And I said, it preached, it taught entirely different. That's the thing about the living word. The problem with Bram Stoker's Bible is a word, but it's not living. In fact, it doesn't even, it, it, it doesn't have, have, really have an existence without, beyond the context of fish. We know vampires are not real. We know that when people die, they dead, they don't come back as vampires. We know persons don't turn to bats, wolves, rats. We know, and I got a dog, I can talk to my dog, but I can't control it. Persons don't do that. You don't control the weather, we don't turn the mist and whatnot. That's part of that story. But yet, when I pick up the Bible, Gideon's story, Abraham's story, Elijah's story, Samuel's story, David's story, they speak differently every time.
And I believe God has ministered two years, three years, for what is called the Rainbow Word, that spoken word that this God gives us, as you read it, and it is, it's miraculous.
It, 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 it's very miraculous. And again, I, my, 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 I say it all the time, my, I don't wanna say disbelief, but my reflection on the gospel is how it has managed to come through time with little to no alterations, and still speak as, as applicable to where I am today as it was back then. Moses, Aaron, what was their sister's name? Moses, Aaron, Maryam. Now, I've never had email, text message, or Facebook, but there are some issues they dealt with in terms of their relationships, in terms of their discretion, in terms of their transparency, that are as applicable today in terms of how we move on social media, and but, social media wasn't around. You know, I, the Old Testament deals, in fact, I think it's Nehemiah. You could use Nehemiah, you could go into a labor dispute between a company and a union, and walk in and use Nehemiah and settle the arguments, because there is a labor issue in Nehemiah, all right? Who would've thought way back then that someone was gonna create something called an automobile? And from creating the automobile, there would, there would birth unions. And these unions would be representative of workers, and they would stand between companies and workers to prevent companies from mistreating workers. Who would've thought about that when they reduced Nehemiah's writing? No one. But that's the beauty of God's word, that it speaks as relevantly, as applicable, I'm gonna start making up words here, call me Jesse Jackson Union for one time, don't wrong me, uh, directly as it did when it first, and guess what? If we could go into the future twenty-five hundred years now, it is still, and there'd be things going on that we would never thought. Hope by that time, we got Star Trek Enterprise going, and lightsabers and whatnot, so that I can bring a lightsaber back and come back in a, in a starship. I, I swear, I wanna be a captain of a Federation starship.
Well, I listened to the news, excuse me, yesterday, and it seemed that this Japanese citizen is going into space for the first time to go to the moon, right?
I, I guess.
It was on Bloomberg yesterday. He's a billionaire, but he paid for his right to be the first citizen on the moon. And he left, was it yesterday or so?
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't know he left.
According to Bloomberg.
He, 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 he was in a, in a rocket. I hope he makes it back. I hope he makes it back, because I know getting there, he's basically strapped himself to a missile. I mean, that's what a rocket is, you know, you, 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 in place of the compartment where you put the warhead, you've got a cockpit there. But you've got all that jet fuel, rocket fuel sitting behind you, and the slightest explosion, it incinerates you. Because rocket fuel is extremely hot, it burns extremely hot. Uh, uh, and so, God bless him, and that's what he wanted to go through. I, I, I'd rather wait till we get Starship Enterprise, Starship Voyager, you can beam me up with no problems, I ain't got to ride on a rocket, and I, we, we there in a couple seconds, amen. Amen, praise, Sean, Brother Sean, you're getting a good, getting a lot of shit.
Still, I wouldn't know about being there in a couple seconds.
Yeah.
Space travel, but it's thought travel, really.
Right, right.
To me.
Um, uh, it is, and I, I so wanna see us really do this, I really wanna see. I, I think the day is coming, we're gonna be able to travel like that. We just, the science is not there yet. Now, the funny thing is, if you, physicists, physicists, especially actual physicists, have the formulas to do this. The problem is, is converting the formula from an abstract idea to a concrete reality. And 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 the thing is, I mean, if you go in their office, they have all these boards, all these symbols on it, I mean, it'd drive you crazy, give you a migraine. But but they claim, based on these mathematical formulas, that all this is possible. Uh, extremely possible.
And it's stuff like Einstein. Well, no, it would be really further back, to the thirteenth century, even further back.
I, and you know what, I'm I'm, I did, I had, this is my argument. Copernicus, Newton, none of them discovered anything, because Egyptians were doing it. And no alien came and taught them how to do it, no other. They, with with, they, they had physics, geometry, algebra, trigonometry, all that together. They had even chemistry. Do you, do you know that the, uh, the, like, for example, nail polish? A lot of ladies like nail polish, my wife likes nail polish. But about two, about in two weeks for her nails, she has to go getting the nails, her hands, fingernails done. And about every three to four weeks, she gets her toenails done. Well, the Egyptians had a form of nail polish that was so durable that they, that they, when they painted the, 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 uh, the queens, the pharaohs' wives, and and women buried, the bodies were disintegrated, but the nail polish had no imperfection. Not not only that, but the Egyptians came up with embalming. That's chemistry.
And I did not know that on, in the hieroglyphics, there were space people painted on those walls that looked like men from outer space, because America did not invent those designs. They actually went back to Egypt and saw those hieroglyphics, and they had on Space helmets and and, uh, with Earth, Wind &amp; Fire many, many years ago. That was, that was a fascinating album to me, because it had, I'd have to bring it to you, to show it to you.
I know, but, um. I'm an Earth, Wind, and Fire fan, I I know what's out when you're talking about.
Yeah, and but, um, it's a, it's just amazing of what they've gotten and stolen. Of course, they go to every country and look for treasures and gold, and they just bombard and move the people out of the way and say, I'm looking for gold, this is mine. And it is so, so rich.
That 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 is part of this Western culture mentality.
It's corrupt.
It is very, it's very corrupt. Uh, this is why, uh, you have some minority leaders who view, and I don't think everyone in West, in white Western society is susceptible to this. But you have some leaders that view, uh, that the whole race are none the thieves. And I understand how they can arrive at that decision, because, uh, it's the same way that we say, you know what, you may not have been the one to actually enslave my ancestors. Your ancestors did it, but you are living off the wealth of that system. You're that, the wealth of that system is still keeping you buoyant financially. And and so, there is, I understand there's some kind of accountability that that's attached to that. Uh, uh, but but I, but I will will say that the the history is, uh, that many, uh, persons from Western European civilizations, uh, and we are, America is a descendant of that civilization, went into indigenous territories and literally ransacked things. Stole ideas, uh, uh, in fact, it was interesting is when, when white colonists showed up here at America's, and they had black slaves, the Indians saw them and went up and called them brothers. Cause it, it, what, what, the Indian, there was a shared experience, there was something, they knew they shared something and whatnot. They did not share with 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 the white colonists. And so, I I say all that to say, yes, uh, uh, we 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 can say whatever. Uh, but we we are the originators and creators of a whole lot of stuff. Uh, and again, no apple gave anyone, uh, any knowledge, it was stolen knowledge. Even, I would even go so far as say, uh, uh, many, uh, Western religions basically are carving copies of Egyptian mythology. Carving copies of Egyptian mythology. I mean, without a doubt, we know the Greek and Rome, Roman, uh, mythology are literally carved copies. One, because before Rome enters into Egypt, Egyptian territory, they had no organized religion, religion. It was really village to village. It wasn't until they entered, entered into Egyptian territory, they learned about Egyptian God, that here, they brought it back. And now, now, the, 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 uh, uh, the emergence of Zeus and 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 what's his Roman counterpart? Uh, I, whatever. No, 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 uh, no, 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 Zeus, Zeus is the father god.
Really? Or Osiris?
Uh, Osiris is the father god in Egypt, Zeus is built off of him. But when you get the wrong, his name is not Zeus, it is, um, I'll figure it out, but go, but go ahead, you guys say something.
Oh, I think there's a connection, it's common here, between Jesus Christ and Egyptology. Because when his family took him and fled, when his, what the king was looking for, he went back to Egypt for a couple of years, and it's not spoken about in the Bible, how long he stayed. But I think that's how he learned about those miracles. Was when he went back to Egypt, he learned something.
Well, here's the thing, what, 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 and what, well, here's the thing, I was gonna say, uh, within some Asian religion texts, they speak about a man named Ishim that came from what they call the Far West, we call it the the Middle East. And, uh, and there, and there is belief that at least between his eighteenth birthday and that thirtieth birthday, Jesus spent time in Far Eastern, uh, cultures, learning from them. Uh, cause his name is mentioned in texts we would not think to be there, uh, that that he will be in. So I think his knowledge was well researched, well studied, that that he he had not limited himself to simply Hebrew or Israel, Israelite knowledge and training. That he, his training was was expansive.
Divine.
It it was just divine, it it was divine, because he's divine, but I also wanna say it was expansive. Because there, we could see in some of his teachings, things that reflect influences from Egypt, from Asia, from India, uh, from that whole area, region. And again, at least twelve years is enough time for him to be doing a lot of travel. You know, especially if the average man can walk eighteen to twenty-five miles a day without really getting tired. That's about the 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 dysatremia villages. They they wouldn't have been about eighteen, twenty. So he was walking every few weeks, he was going in further, further into new territories. And we had, you had to remember, they did have boats then. And so, he didn't have to walk everywhere, he could, he could, he could've gotten on boats and 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 ridden to where he he wanted, needed to go. Uh, but but, I, it brings me back to to the, to the point we were discussing, that it's important to know the context in which the author is writing in, because the author is trying to disseminate information, standards, mores, customs through the story he tells or she tells. And so, that is why, uh, with, you know, we are going through this, because we wanna know who wrote what and why did they write it, because that would then determine what is, what is it that we can glean from what what we're reading. So, we're picking up, cause we looked at the Iwas and the Lwas, uh, uh, we're picking up with the priestly group, uh, amen. The priestly group of writers are relatively easy to recognize, okay? It's recognized by its dry, formulaic style, okay? For the priestly group of writers, there's no brain. You know, all that fun stuff that we get in life, well, here's the law, here's the situation, what did you really want to do? Cause you really wanted to apply the law, and then they not get this, or not get this, and then to the priest, they're like, yes. It's either or. Either you apply it and you're obedient to God, or you're not, you don't apply and you're not obedient to God. And so, when we see, uh, uh, stories where the character is given the either-or scenario, either be a do what God says, or don't do what God says, either be obedient or don't be obedient, that's probably a priestly story. Also, if we read a story that, uh, is, the process is A, B, C, D to get to E, and there's no swerving, that's probably another priestly story, okay? Uh, it it's, it's dry. When the last time you picked a book, a book advice, you know, I'm just gonna read Leviticus. It 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 is interesting, but you ain't, that's not the first book you're gonna read. Because, because, or or, because it's dry. I mean, it's, it's about, it's about offerings.
Really?
And offerings and other laws. There's some, some things that happen in there, but how many times you go to revival, and someone says, Eternity, Leviticus, chapter nineteen? You don't, you don't see that. What what you will hear is someone talk and say, this comes from Leviticus, chapter nineteen, this is the law that comes out of that. But you don't really see us preaching from that, because it's not, there's not, there's not a lot of meat on that bone. You know, you know, that, and I see, I see you, I see you looking like that.
Well, I think sometimes there is, like I say, divine revelation. Um, Michael Drawson, I don't know if you've heard of him, but he was a Jew, and, uh, he, um, invented, or he saw a code in the Bible that's called the, um, biblical code, he was a Jew though. And there were so many things, um, that we call déjà vu, but, uh, hidden revelations. And he talked about things like, um, things that would happen in the world that no one would have a revelation of.
This is recent, right?
Well, it's been in the last thirty years, I would say, that he said.
And 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 and, and he, he's one of many people who...
They can predict the future from the code pillar to, is what they say.
They, 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 they...
They would go every twenty-three letters and would seek codes and write it down. And it would give dates of the Jews being, uh, released from, um...
For captivity.
I mean, no, I mean, what, in the World War, one and two, and how Jews were, um, it would give dates on so many things that it could not have, it had to been divine or given.
But but here's, here's the problem with the Bible. The Bible is written so that whatever you wanna argue, you can find support for it, the Bible.
Even murder.
Even murder, you can find support for it. Uh, uh, so, and he's not the first, he's not the last people been doing it forever. Uh, finding revel, secret revelations, I mean, that's the whole basis of the Mormon religion, that their leader believed that it was a secret knowledge that only he could get, and that God had it recorded or two golden discs that only he could read. My purpose is saying that there's not a lot of meat on the bone for preaching purposes, Leviticus is. There, Leviticus is so cut and dry about what the law is. We don't actually get a lot of instances where we see the law in action, okay? So like, for example, um, the, uh, uh, when Sarah is upset when she sees, uh, Ishmael playing with Isaac, and she's afraid that that, that, uh, Abraham's gonna follow the law. What she's referring is the Levitical law, which says the oldest son inherits the family name, the blessing and the money, not the youngest son. Well, Sarah has this promise from God that God is going to bless her son, her son, and make, make him the father of many nations. She cannot divorce Levitical law from God's prophecy. And so, she thinks that God's prophecy will be realized through Levitical law. So what she tries to do, she tries to remove the son, the eldest son, so that under Levitical law, if the eldest son has died or has forsaken his right, it decedes down to the next son. So that's what she's trying to put in play. You get that in, in, in Genesis, you don't get that in Leviticus, Leviticus is the law. The nuances, that juicy part, we try to figure out how this law is, is happening in the stories around. That's why I'm saying you're not gonna see a lot of preachers preach from Le- Le- Leviticus. They will reference Leviticus, so you will know where the law is that, that, that is in the story. But to see the characters react and see how they flesh out how the law applies to them, you see it in the surrounding stories, you don't really see it in Leviticus. So that's why I said, there's not a lot of meat, it's not that there's not a, in a lot of knowledge that you cannot get out of Levit- Lev- Leviticus. It's just that Leviticus doesn't really serve for good preaching, especially for captivating attention. Uh, that, that, that's not to say that someone can't do it, I'm sure there's someone that can go on Leviticus, stay there for their whole life, and have us on the intermission. Oh, my God. You know, you know, I'm I'm sure, I'm su- I'm sure they are, I mean, I'll be honest with you. Bishop Jakes just finished a five-week series on Exodus twenty, Exodus thirty-five to forty, the tavernal, construction of tavernal. And before he did it, I did not think that there was nothing interesting about, I I thought that was a Bible study Sunday School text. I did not think that was a preaching text.
Nah, I have his whole videotapes on the, that must, he must have revisited that. Because I have his whole set of videotapes on the tavernal boat.
Well, well, he, well, he must have, this was recently, this, I I I've been watching this one online. Cause the, the, it's the, on Sunday evenings, the services, you can see them online for free. And so, this is what he's been showing online in the evening, so this, and thi- this is, uh, this has been him with the little short mic, uh, with with with, instead of the goatee, the gray, the gray beer, the the salt, the the salt beer, there ain't no pepper in it. And he, he don't put on a little more weight, so this, you can tell, if he revisited, he's revisited presently. It's not an old, older version. But but my, but my point is, to to know how the tavernal was built and how he analogized parts of the tavernal to who Jesus was and his purpose and function, I never would, I I I never would've thought that, that that could be done and holds one's attention. So I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying, I don't think that 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 is a lot of meat on that bone. I I I think if you want a good story, you want Genesis, Exodus, uh, the last half of Numbers, and Deuteronomy. You really want, uh, 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 them going into the, you really want them, uh, at Exodus, in the end of Exodus, going into, uh, I know, the end of Deuteronomy, going into Judges. When, uh, when he gives the, Moses gives the leadership, turns it over to Joshua, because he cannot go into the promised land. And so, then what you see is, they no longer have the constant law giver, the reminder of the law is. Now they have to rely on their memory and what their notes are. And how, and now they have, instead of having Moses there with all that wisdom, now they're having to figure this thing out as they go. And they made some terrible decisions. That's wonderful for a preacher, cause we can think of all the bad decisions we done made in our lives. You know, we, you know, but 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 he say, he say, hey, you know, we're having revival this month. Our revival comes from a little, a little bit, it was nineteen. A little bit, it was nineteen? You talking about the one that says, don't, don't, any, anything you pick from the vine that falls on the ground, leave it there for the, for the alien? And the widow, and the...
Stranger.
Stranger? I gotta preach on that? That's, that's... They, they, right, and some churches need, need, need to, need to have some sermons on that. But again, most, and let me say what I deserve. Most preachers are worried about impressing the church they're invited to, to get invited back. Uh, I I just hate to say it, like, yeah, you know, um, the one preacher I really liked, he came to preach at, uh, University Park. And so, I mean, he, he just slayed me. So I heard through my alumni grapevine, he was coming back to Charlotte to another church. So I made the point to schedule my time while I was there to go here and preach. So the first night he's preaching, I said, this is awesome, wow. It just must be his style, it seems, I, it sounds something, this, this maybe the style. The second night, wait a second. This, this is a little, little, little strange here. By the third night, I was talking with him during his sermon, because I I realized he preached, he was preaching the same three sermons, and I went and found them, cause I had bought them. And he preaching it, and so what happened, I I figured out, I was talking to one of my mentors at Simon's, said, most preachers, when they're traveling like that, have a small number of sermons that they preach over and over and over again. And largely because they know that most of the audience will not have heard it. You know what I'm saying, and it's very rare that a preacher gets invited back to the same city in the same amount, in the same time period. Usually, they get invited back months later. So he was like, that was very rare for him to be here in June, then be right back in July. But that was because he knew the two passes, and two passes arranged, arranged for him to come back and to preach. But I tell you, I I felt like that was a wasted opportunity. And because of that, I, and I, I don't want, and and again, I don't wanna sound arrogant, I don't wanna hear my colleagues think I'm arrogant. But my concern was this, the issues that we were dealing, that we as members were dealing with at University Park may not have been the issues that the members of First Baptist were dealing with at the time. In fact, when, when, I'll come to you, when preachers invite me to preach to their church, at first I ask them, what are you dealing with? What are you dealing with? Because I can't assume that I can take a sermon that I preached here to y'all already, which I'm comfortable with, fits... Then, that sermon was made for y'all. It it was fit to conform, to mold, to what we're dealing with here. It would not, cause again, we're a small church. We have, in fact, we, we've got a set of financial, uh, concerns right now that a church like University Park doesn't have. And they got... And they got a set of financial concerns that we would love to have. You know what I'm saying? So, 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 me preaching the, the widow's might, here may have a, may, or there may be received in an entirely different way than it received here. Because folks here would probably identify with the widow. Cause we're so small, we're trying to make, make is meet. So here it is, we were literally giving everything to make is meet. Whereas at a larger church, many times people were giving out their abundance. And so, and so here is Jesus talking about, this woman gave everything she had and these parrots is over here using up. And when they do give, they only give out abundance. Two different audiences hearing two different things. And I cannot assume that one over here will hear it the same way over here. I, I told you, I'm, I'm always shocked when y'all come up and say, Pastor, you spoke to me. And God will say to me, okay, you're dealing with this and you're dealing with that. And they're not, they're one hundred eighty degrees metro, you're opposed to each other. I'm like, how'd you hear that? You know?
Living words.
It, it, it's the living word. Go ahead, love. What were you hearing saying?
No, I was just gonna say, I would think a pastor has to go in three sermons, one for what?
Well, and, and he does. And, and, he, he, he does. But what my mentor was telling me at the time was, those are revival sermons. You know, it's... But, and, and he does have them, but the thing is, the trend late recently, for the last few years, is do three-night revivals. And so, and it's, and so the, the, the truth is, he probably has maybe three or four sets of three-night revivals. Uh, and, and probably is rotating. Uh, uh, but it just so happened that maybe the rotation was by the time he got back, he was back to the same set he used when he came the first time. Uh, and plus, plus, here's another thing I think about and one thing I promised God in terms of my pastoring y'all. I'm trying not to give you stale bread. It's hard, it's hard, it's hard.
Traveling that maybe...
Right, 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 right. And, and it may happen where I may have to eat my words and y'all may give us stale bread.
I understand.
But, but my hope and plan is, is, is stale bread to the church I came from preaching, not stale bread. Y'all, it may be the first time you heard it, but I've been preaching it someplace else, all right? Uh, but no, cause when I think about it, God never gives us stale bread. His, His revelation, the living word is always fresh and new. His mercies are new every day. He doesn't get up and say, here, I'm, 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 here, let me give you what's left over from your yesterday's. It's, it's brand new, fresh mercy. And if God has blessed me to be able to go minister on behalf of this church to other churches, that's what I've been called to do. I wasn't called to go golfing. I know some folks just like to go golfing when they go on these trips. Okay, boy, I'm getting myself in trouble some folks. I'm giving all this away. They like to golf. They like to go eat. They like to just get away. They like to go to the movies, go to the plays, whatnot. That's not what God's called me to do. God's called me to minister. And many times, up to the moment of the sermon, I'm really still in it. Even on Sunday mornings, I'm still running through it, preparing it in my mind, changing things, rearranging things. So God has, has called, called me to minister. So I, I say all that to say, me personally, as your pastor, my preference is never give you stale bread, is to give it to you fresh. And to, and I, I don't, oh, and, and, and it goes back to the fact that the word. So I said all that to get it all the way back here. Because the word is so new every time I pick it up, I believe my word should be new every time I pick it up. You know, um, again, that's not to say you may not hear something that sounds familiar, actually. You know, uh, again, a Ferrari is a Ferrari. You know what I'm saying? There's certain driving characteristics about a Ferrari that you won't find on any other car. Same thing, a nine eleven has certain driver characteristics, and they're entirely different. But you know, no matter what, whether it's an old Ferrari or old Porsche or new Ferrari or new Porsche, which car you're getting into once you sit in and you start driving.
Nine eleven, was it Porsche?
A nine eleven, yes, Porsche, yeah. And the nine eleven, uh, uh, Por- Porsche, yeah. There, there are other ones, but that's the, that's the legendary, the classic one. Uh, uh, that Porsche has had since the beginning of years. Um, uh, you know, uh, but it is what it is. Um, um, let me go back to the, I, I think I hit the, all right, yeah. Many times, uh, the priestly group will present God as this ethereal being sitting high and lofty, high and lofty, somewhere in heaven. The, the, the best representation of this is Isaiah six. Where it says, "I was caught up in a vision and I was taken into the house of God and there sat the Lord God in his train field, the temple. And the angels were flying by them with six, or twain rings, six wings, two to cover their feet, two to cover their, 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 their body, two to fly. And they're flying around saying, holy, 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 the Lord God is holy." That ethereal moment in our mind that we can sit there, we can see the image of God, we may not be able to see his face, but see that bright light. And you expect to hear the chorus, chorus of angels going, "Ooh." You, you know, that, that's the, that's a priestly presentation. He doesn't ever move. He just sits there. The only thing that moves is his mouth. And when something needs to happen, God doesn't get up and do it, he speaks it in the being. Let there be light, "Ooh, it's light." Let there be permit to separate the waters of the sky from the waters in the, in, on, on the, on the, on the earth. There was heaven and there was earth. You know, let there be a greater one to rule the day, a lesser one to rule the night. Let the, let the water, water, wet, wet, uh, 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 what, what is saying? Team forth, come forth from the water, let the ground team with life and the, and the air, uh, be filled with, with birds. So then we got animals. Let us create man in our image. Let male, female, let us create them. Let us create them in our image. So, so he speaks, it happens. Uh, uh, also, uh, it's not necessarily a priestly writer, but we see it in the Gospels too. Remember the centurion? The centurion that the Jews said loved Jews and really respected their religion. And they brought the centurion to Jesus and said, "Jesus, please help him." And, and Jesus said, "Okay, I'll go with you." He says, "You know what? I don't need you to go with me. I'm a man of authority. I tell a soldier to do something, they do it. They go, if you just say it, that's good enough for me." That's really a priestly presentation. It's not written by priestly writers, but that idea comes from the priestly, that, that here it is, a true person of faith doesn't need God to do anything. That all God has to do is speak it and it would, and it would, it would happen. So, uh, again, we, 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 we see it time and time again in the scriptures, uh, where, uh, God does actually do it, anything he, he, he comes in being. Now, this, their writers are also recognized by a couple of things. A very strong interest in genealogies. Anytime you read a story, and before you get to read the story, you got to read the twenty generations of who they are. That's likely a priestly account of a story. And let me tell you why. We were talking about it earlier. It's not just to show who they descended from. Many times those genealogies point you back to a person that had, really had one-on-one interaction with God. The idea is that this person is a descendant of someone that God personally chose. And if God personally chose their forefather, then God is still with them. So when they give you the genealogy, they're giving it to you so that anything they say to do after that point, you would read it with more, well, you would take more on from it than you would if you didn't take it, all right? In, in, in fact, we do the same thing, okay? Uh, this is Dr. Such-and-Such, Professor of Such-and-Such. You know, he went to Harvard for undergrad, Yale for his master, and Princeton for his PhD. He, he studied abroad at Cambridge and actually was a fellow at Cambridge. Where you're giving all this before you, the person, you need to meet the person. Cause what you're doing, you're trying to press upon your listener that this person has such credibility, such influence, that whatever he or she says, you ought to pay double attention to it. In fact, we were talking earlier in the, in the Bible study earlier today, how growing up, my friends and I were all the sons of prominent black professionals here in Charlotte. It, it just so happened, we weren't, it wasn't like our parents put us together. Uh, it just so happened that we, our parents arranged for us to go to Saint School and out of it, we just developed a friendship. So here's my father, who for the longest time was the only black oral surgeon between Washington DC and Atlanta. Uh, one of my friends, uh, his father became a bishop in Amiezyan Church and is now their presiding bishop in Amiezyan Church. Another one of my friend's father is a former house representative and he now sits as the chairperson of Fannie Mack and Fannie Mae. Uh, uh, and, and, but we're all named after our fathers. And so when people would encounter us, we'd all be hanging out. "Oh, there you are, little Tommy, little George, little Mel." And we're like, mm-mm, no. It's, it's George, Ally, and, and Brian, or, or Jason. He went by, middle Jason. His brother was Brian. Uh, we didn't want to be identified by, by, by them because we wanted our own identity. However, persons were basically using our gene, genealogies to say, casting the identity for us. In fact, I was sharing earlier, I, I, one of the things I worried about with my babies is that them, cause y'all know me as Pastor Al. And it's funny, Pastor Al has actually become something of a character of itself. You know what I'm saying? Everywhere I go, Pastor Al, people know me as that. And so it's like, it's like T D Jakes. Like his wife said, "I know Thomas Dexter Jakes. Y'all know T D Jakes." You know, when, when, when he don't take that trash out, it's Thomas Dexter Jakes. Why did you take the trash out? When I need such a Tommy baby? You, you know what I'm saying? You know, same thing. Nicole knows Al. My mom knows Ally. You know, the kids know Daddy. Uh, but sometimes I get worried that as God grows us, and by default, grows me as well, that my notoriety will not become their identity. That they will be able to forge their own identities. You know, even if they wanted to go in ministry, they're in ministry because they want to go and go, not... I have friends who are sons, uh, sons and daughters of notable pastors. And, 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 and the first thing they do is, "Oh, it makes sense. Yo daddy." I mean, I've, we got a student now, his father is a well-known bishop. And when everyone met him his first year, they said, "Oh, you're a bishop's son." "Oh, that makes sense why you here." He's like, "No, I'm here because I want to be here, not because I'm his son." This is what happens, that I'm his son and we have the same name. But that, that is not what, uh, what I, what, why I'm here. You know what I'm saying? And, and, but the, the priestly, they're big on this. They're big on genealogies. So when you see one, it's there because some priestly writer wants you to know that this person descends from someone that had a personal relationship with God, and they should be given more credibility, more influence than you, or credence than you would give, uh, some, somebody else, all right? Another thing they're into is dates. You talking about the dates. They are big on dates. You know, eighty years ago on this day, da-da-da-da-da. You know, you know, you know how some of us get, you know, my, my great grandmother found this church with her husband and they're six neighbors in, in eighteen forty-five. And, and I had grown up in a church. My grandfather was the first pastor. My, my, my father was the sixth pastor. You know, I would have been the pastor if I stayed in school, but I didn't stay in school. And what I'm telling you right now is you're not gonna come in here and you're not gonna change anything because this, this is what's been going on since eighteen forty-five. People hating their hats on that, the dates. You know what I'm talking about, Bishop?
But I, I simply, there is a permissive will and a child of promise, just like Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. Well, the Ishmael and Isaac that you were speaking to, Isaac was a child of promise, but he blessed Ishmael, who also had twelve sons, as well as Isaac or Jacob's twelve sons.
Be, be, be...
And that's still working today, the hour.
They, they are. And, and, but you got to go back to the story and realize why he did it. It, the issue, cause he, he almost says it, it's, it's implied. You are where you are because your father made a decision and I allowed him to make that decision. And, and, no, God took it off Ishmael, Ishmael. But he let him live. He said, "I allowed it." That was, that's a per, per, permissive will. I call it permissive versus perfect will. The perfect will was Isaac, all right? But what God does, God says, "I'm going to honor the promise that was made to your father because you are your father's child." All right? And you're right. Ishmael had twelve sons. Who grew into twelve nations, Arab nations. And here's, here's a funny thing. You know who the Edomites are? Those are descendants of Is- of Esau. Esau, after, if you go back and read, it's, I think it's Genesis thirty-six, so it's thirty-six, thirty-five or thirty-six. At one point, he becomes so distant. And, and I think this happened during Jacob's, Jacob, him and Jacob's separation. He was so angry with what happened. That he disassociates himself from being Jacob's, being Isaac's son and calls himself Ishmael's son. It's, it's, it's right. I, I, I was doing research. I was trying to find, uh, I was trying to find out with, when we started our starting series now, what sons were, were the sons of which one, you know, uh, uh, Rachel, Leah, Bilhah, Zilpah. And so what happened in reading, there's a beginning of a chapter, I think it's thirty-six, where the first, I think eighteen verses are out of context. And they talk about, uh, Esau's descendants, and they're called Edomites, all right? It is from the Edomites that Muhammad, the Muslim prophet, claims he's a descendant. And if you read a Muslim, uh, 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 Quran, in there, the child of promise is not Isaac, it's Ishmael. And the slave wife is Sarah. And the child of permissive is, 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 is Isaac. It's reversed and whatnot. So every, in other words, everything that puts an emphasis on, on the Abraham, Isaac, Jacob line, is reversed and put on Ishmael, uh, uh, Ishmael, Esau, and that, and that line. Uh, 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 that line of, 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 of Israelite, um, family members. And so, uh, I, I, I say, I say all of that to say, cause I'm coming back to, to your, your statement. I agree, there's a permissive will, and then you call it a promise, or what I call the perfect will.
I do that too.
And, and so, so, cause I have this story I tell, burned my wife up every time I turn, tell the story. Um, when I started practicing, I was listening to too many people tell me what a black, a black lawyer should look like. You know, everyone had their input. Everyone thought they were being parental to me. And sometimes I think people should just hold what they think because many times it just screws things up. So one thing, cause at the time I had a black Honda Civic. I was that close to paying it off. That close. Free riding, y'all. Honda Civic. That close, the car gave me no trouble whatsoever. I remember walking in court, a group of black lawyers, a group of black judges, like, "What kind of black lawyer drives a Civic?" Not a successful one. Maybe one that struggled, but not a successful one. They really killed me so bad that I started going by the Benz dealership, because they all were driving Benzes. So finally I did a case and, and saw the Benz, and I came back and I saw the Benz, I wanted a black one. And I had those calls. And I heard something say, "If you're gonna get it, get it because it's not gonna be here next week." Cause my plan was to go home, sleep on it. So soon enough I went home, sleep on it, came back seven days later, it was gone. In this place were two white ones and two silver ones. So I had a choice. I looked at it and I chose this white one. And I remember the dealer said, "You know, let me go ahead and get your information." When he walked away, I heard a voice say, "You don't want this." I said, "Yes, I do." And the voice said, "No, you don't want this car." I said, "I don't work hard for this. This was gonna make me..." And, 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 and I, and I realize now what it was. Because the voice said, "Okay, if you want it, have it, but take everything that comes along with it." That was God said, "Okay, you want it, you're my child. I'm gonna let you have it." Permissive. So, I'll make you laugh. Uh, I got the car and I started seminary. And, and I dated, uh, a young woman in, in seminary. And she had a Benz also. Got her Benz at the same time, same year, same everything. But in her Benz, she had all kinds of options I didn't even know about. I didn't know about. I mean, I, I said, "You can do that?" She said, "Yeah." I was like, "I can do that?" And I had the bigger one. She had the small, but I had the bigger one. I was like, "You can do that?" She was like, "Yeah." And so every time I got, I said, "Man, I like your car better than mine." And so what happened, my car started breaking down to a point where, I don't mind sharing with you, I had a seven hundred dollar monthly car note. And for about eight months, had a forty-nine hundred dollar monthly car repair bill. My, yeah, let me say that again. I had the, I, I don't think you heard it, Chris. Let me say that again. I had a seven hundred dollar monthly car note. And then a forty-nine hundred dollar monthly car repair bill.
So you're paying twelve hundred every month for that? So you spent paying twelve hundred every month for that?
No, I paid, I paid, I, I was, I was. Forty-nine hundred, that, 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 that's, that's, that's fifty-six hundred dollars a month. My, 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 my father said, my father took me along, he said, "I need to take care of my..." He said, "Now, I know the one you're gonna listen to, I'll teach you." So he took me along, he said, he said, "I love you to death, but as much as you're paying on that car, you could have paid it all by now." And we said, "We let you have it as well, everything that goes along with it." It got to the point that I couldn't keep paying the note and the, and, and the repair bill. So I was robbing Peter to pay Paul. And I was hiding the car, you know, and I parked at the par- at the court, your courthouse, I made sure I got in the garage. And I made sure I got in the part, place where this average person couldn't get. If I went someplace, I did not park directly at the place, I parked away. So if you knew I was there, you wouldn't, didn't know where the car was. Yeah, 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 because yeah, the repo man was coming to get it. And I, and it hit, it hit the thing, and it was, and the funny thing, when he got it, it was spring. So it wasn't hot enough to cut the air conditioner on, but it wasn't cold either, so you can leave, no, you leave the windows open. Every night I could hear that diesel. Sitting in front of the car, so here's how stupid I am. I would cut off the lights and crawl to the front of the house and peek up over the, over the window sill, to see if he, and I'm like, "Yeah, there he is." And so finally one day, I, I, and one day, this is going on for months. And so one day, I mean, I was just so tired of this. Because I wasn't even parking my car, my mom said, "Where's your car?" So I was around the corner, in the office. So I, 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 I just pulled up one day, I said, "I'm tired, whatever, do whatever you're gonna do." I had to put my briefcase down to the guy knocking on the door, he said, "We finally found you." "We didn't get the car," I said. "Yeah, I'm gonna get it." I said, "Here, let me get myself out, you can, you can have the car, alright?" And so here was a young black lawyer.
Yes, sir.
Who had gone from a place of really starting off of saving a lot of money. To had nothing in the bank anymore. In debt. Borderline, borderline went broke, and now had no car. So, talk about TD Jakes. My, I called my frat brother to come pick me up. My mother gets there from practice, she said, "Where are your cars?" So I told her, she said, "Take my car." So I took one of her cars, I went home, feeling kind of drunk. Couldn't go to sleep at night, you know how you lay and you wrestle? And God said, "Get up and go downstairs." I said, "That's fine," so I went downstairs. To be honest with you, got me a drink, got me a cigar, and I just sat down. A- amen, praise God, a- 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 amen, I, I, I'd rather you be transparent and know, you know? A- a- uh, and so, you know, I sat down there with my, 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 my cognac and cigar. And I was gonna listen to jazz music, I was gonna cut on my jazz music. And God said, "No, turn it to BET." So I said, "Well, I don't wanna make a video, so..." You know what I'm saying, I said, "I don't wanna make a video, so..." And so I didn't realize, this was a time when Bishop Jason had bought TV time that late at night, and I was like, "Why is he..." Then I realized why, because all of us who can't sleep are up watching BTDJ. And so it just so happened that the sermon he preached that night was about when he was a young minister. And he was first started off in ministry, when he was, started, he had planted the parish house, but they weren't big enough where he could just pastor. So he was still working in the city's, uh, general maintenance department. And he had, uh, bought his first pickup truck. He said he knew it was too expensive, he should have gotten an older version, but he just had to have it. And he said one morning, he got up, he walked out the door, the back door. He said, "The house had caddy on a corner, so one part of the house was on this side of the street, the other was on the other street." So he came out the back, because that's where you remember parking. And so when he walked out, he didn't see the truck, he said, "You know what? I must have been so tired last night, I must have put it on the front of the house." So he goes back in the house, to the front of the house, and he does see his truck. So he says, "She must have got up this morning, runs to the door, "Let me ask her where she parked my truck, what did this woman do to my truck?" She said, "Faye, where's my truck?" She said, "Where you left it last night?" And so it says, something says, "Go back out," and so he walked back out, he said, "Where he lived." He said, "At the top of the hill, the street dipped down in the valley, but to get out the neighborhood, you had to come up the other side of the hill." So when he came back outside, he saw his truck on the back of a bed going up the other side of the hill. And so he called his boy, said, "You need to come by." He said, "You just got the shit, you have car broke," he said, "A man, a sort of, he said, "You need to take that car back." He said, "It did go back." And he said, "What do you mean?" He said, "The, the people came to repossess the car." And so he said, uh, what he had to learn was, not that he wasn't any less anointed than he, than he was. Not that he wasn't gonna become the same TD Jakes that we know today. What it meant was, the young men of God had to get some priorities straight and get his finances in order. So that God could bless him with what he need and stop trying to live up to everyone's expectations. So God, I heard God speak to me through that. So, you know, I borrowed my mom's car for about eighteen months. Eighteen months later, I, I had to get a car, you know, my father said, "I need my car back." So I, you know, we, we got that for us, not you. And so the funny thing, I was going to get a Nissan Altima. And I, but I had looked and I saw there were some Z's on the lot, because I wanted a Z. That's the car I really wanted. Uh, and when I walked in the door, the guy said, "Hello, Turner Kenneth." "I know you." Yeah.
Yeah.
He said, "Pick out whatever car you want," and I, I walked to the dealer. So I was looking at Altima, and so he walked up and said, "That's not really what you want." He said, he, he, he said, "I know you." He really didn't know me, because I, I tell you, he, he was a form of con. Really wasn't a con, he came to ask for some advice, I gave him advice, and he said that that advice changed his life. And so he always said, if he saw me again, whatever he do, if he could help me, he would. And so he said, he said, "You want something that's a lot more sporty." He said, "It's, it's, it's in the back of the lot, going back there, it's waiting on you." And sure enough, there was a line of Z's. I was looking for a black one, and they had, they had a pearl white one. When I looked at it, it looked dirty, and I said, "Why is it dirty?" He said, "It's not dirty, it's pearl white." And, and he said, "Let's pull it out," so we went test driving. And I said, "This is, this is a trick, it gets you falling in love and it gets you in there." So we go sit down, so my mom was like, "Don't let him get you, don't let him get you." And so he said, "What do you think you, you would get me on the car?" So I, I said, I already, something said, "You need to take this out," so I gave him this, he said, "Oh, that's pretty good." So he tipped the paper and scratched out the signature, gave me the number, so I took a deep breath, because I could see scratch outs, I was like.
I know.
So I looked at the number, the number was way lower than, than, than what I. And so what happened, he gave me the rate he would get if he bought a car as a dealer. And so I said, I said, he said, "I just need to go get my manager approvals," my mom and I went to each other, it's like, "You know what? They're gonna run that price back up." They, they gonna use a manager that's a bad guy, he's gonna come out saying, "I tried, but my manager..." The manager came back and said, "Hope you enjoy the car." He said, "I'm gonna have a financial manager come over here and do the paperwork." So I said, "My mom said, "You know what, they're gonna, there's gonna be some fees." No fees, I didn't pay any fees, I, I paid tax, they paid my, in fact, no, they paid my taxes, they paid my title, they paid my tax. I paid the, the price of the car and whatnot, so that's what's, that's about a twenty-five hundred dollar, a cost that's associated with a car. So I, so I get the car, everything I want, this car has all the options that the Benz should have had. I mean, every option. And I sat back and, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm almost in the story, so I had a car for seven days, and they called me and said, "Mr. Ken, we have a problem, we need to bring the car back, we need to resign some stuff because we gave you the wrong price." So I walk in there, I'm cussing, I'm cussing, "How dare you do this?" And the manager said, "If you'll be calm for a second, we, we, we'll tell you, we have to take another fifteen hundred dollars off." And, and so I said, I, 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 I say all that to say, I went in there not expecting to get that car. I went in there expecting to get a car, and funny thing, the car, the price I was expecting to pay on the car I was going to get was what I ended up paying on the Z. And so, but I went in there with the idea of getting something I could afford, something that would fit my budget and would be, could get me around. Until I got to a place where God blessed me to get something else. And what happened, God said, "No, because of your faithfulness, because of your dedication and hard work for the last eighteen months, I will give you perfection." And, and he blessed me with, with that car. So I, I, I hear people talk about permissive will versus perfect will, I'm like, you, you can't tell me nothing about that. Because I'm a living witness, uh, a- 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 amen. Here's another permissive thing. I tried for years, uh, applying for pastors, would always be this, the one of the two finalists, never could get it. God said, "Well, why don't you try this, why don't you start Epiphany like I told you?" I said, "God, there will be no one but BMO," he said, "That's fine, maybe it's you." And it was actually, we actually started about six people, we kept going and going and growing. Couldn't figure out why we were growing the way we were, why we were dealing the way we were. Did not know that was preparation for the perfect, perfect will right here. But I'll tell one of my classmates, I said, "This was fit, it's almost like God custom made a glove to our head." That this ministry fits me. And, and, and so I, I say all that to say, uh, to us, there is a difference. And God will allow us to do some things just because we're children, spoiled children that harass him. But God also said, "You know, if you hold up for a second, you pump your brakes. I'll let you experience some things that'll blow your mind." So thank you for saying that, I'm saying.
Thank you for saying that.
Amen, praise God, amen. I know it's past eight fifteen, because my watch is slow and I got eight sixteen. Amen, amen. So why, why don't we pause right here? Let me give you all updates that I promised to give you. Uh, Deacon Jones knows this. Deacon Jimmy Rembert and his sister Gloria Rembert lost their brother Hilliard yesterday. Uh, uh, he died yesterday. The funeral plans, tentative plans right now are for Saturday at twelve, with a visitation at eleven here at the church. Uh, uh, and that, those are the plans, that's all I know right now. Uh, I'm assuming I'm gonna hear from them tomorrow so we can start getting the program together. Uh, of, of who, who she wants, uh, with Dr. Gloria, I think is taking the lead on this. Who she wants to be there for her brothers. Uh, I covered your prayers for course delivering the eulogy. Uh, and, but I also ask that you pray for that family. Also, what I didn't know at the time, I contacted you, Deacon Jones. Is that morning, Dr. Wilhelmina Rembert, Doc, Deacon Jimmy's wife, lost a cousin that was like this with her older sister. So on the same day, both sides of the family lose someone. So the reality is, there's gonna be a funeral Sunday, Saturday. And there's probably one Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday for this other family member. But just as we are covering Jim, Doc, Deacon Jimmy, Dr. Glow, uh, Dr. Gloria in prayer. We also want to cover, uh, Dr. Wilhelmina Rembert in prayer as well, and her family. Uh, uh, again, we want to pray for those who are going through, pray for healing, amen. Uh, uh, and those who are going through whatever different situations they're going through. Uh, want to pray for you, I know you are literally working, you working two jobs trying to get your mom's stuff together.
He gives us big up to sleep.
A- amen.
I ain't complaining.
A- a- amen, amen, so, uh, we, uh, are there any other prayer concerns, Gloria? Okay, then let's do this, let's, let's have our closing word prayer, amen, amen? Precious Lord, dear Father God, Creator of the heavens and the earth, God. How awesome and magnificent are you really, God? You have loved us and kept us and watched over us and protected us and provided for us, God. Even, God, when we didn't even know we were in trouble, danger, or any need. Father God, you have been an awesome example of what a provider is, what a protector is, what a father is, God. And God, we thank you. We thank you with our goods, we thank you with our lives, we thank you with our spirits, we thank you with everything we have. Father God, we bless you for allowing us to have such a wonderful session of Bible site tonight. We pray, God, that you have planted some words, some seeds in us, God, that you're gonna grow and develop in us. So that, God, we're able to serve you in ways that bring you glory and unite people with you. Father God, we pray for those persons, we lifted their names up in their situations. We pray that you be considerate, kind, and compassionate over them, God. And that, God, they would know your faithfulness and your grace and mercy as God we love on them. Father God, we pray that you take us home safely, that you give us traveling mercies, protective mercies. Till we can return again here to worship you in spirit and truth on Sunday morning. Father God, love on us as always, and God bless those people that you're gonna bring here to join us. It's in your sons mighty, magical, marvelous, magnificent, and we do pray. Amen, 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 amen.